I've done this before. Good evening. I think everybody in attendance knows who I am, just in case. It's Jeff O., my wife and I, Nancy. I have the high can over at the CBI. But I know probably when you saw my name on the agenda tonight, you kind of crammed your thought, well, let's definitely grant that idea, and actually I'm not. So, and in the last 24 hours, the why I'm here has changed just a little bit. I'm coming back from bed for a minute, giving you a basically report of things you need to go into. But for the last four years, I've been working on a program called Senior Insurance Program, or SAP for short, the CBI. So, our previous administrations didn't want to be bothered by this program and didn't see the importance of this initiative. Thankfully, we have some new faces, not only here on the commission, but in the insurance department, and there's a completely different approach now on what the needs are for our citizens. So, rather than having to butter it to you, see, and I'm just going to go over real briefly what this program involves, and this is basically just going to be sort of a catchy look at speed, so everybody's on the same page and you realize sort of what's going on behind the scenes. Introduction. The Senior Insurance Program, here I refer to as SAP, is a widely used and hugely successful program which provides daily contact to one of our most precious resources in our county, our seniors. The SAP also covers handicapped and disabled individuals. Through many years of personal experience with the SAP in Bunkham County, the information given will be based primarily on their program. While Bunkham County has a larger town mass and population in comparison to Graham, the basic principles and procedures can be applied. How it works. The SAP is normally located at the sheriff's office or at the dispatch, emergency, communications office. The simple requirements include an independent phone line, phone, call list, desk, and office telephone. The designated caller reports the work at 8:00 AM and begins calling each name on the list to confirm that he or she is okay. Once all the names have been contacted, the paperwork is in order, the shift is complete until 8:00 AM the following morning. Emergency response. The priority of making these calls is to confirm the recipient's well-being. The reason for locating this program in the sheriff's office and dispatch office is for immediate response, depending on the need. For instance, a deputy is quickly directed to make a welfare check on a recipient who doesn't answer their call. If the caller through direct communication deems necessary, first responders, reuniting ambulance, will be dispatched quickly and efficiently. What the SAP provides. For a majority of the recipients, the SAP is the only personal contact in their daily lives. Besides the obvious confirmation of their well-being, the SAP caller provides a familiar friendly voice which forms a personal relationship of sorts over time. Conversations can include anything from the weather, road conditions, local happenings, just a simple "how are you feeling today?" This call becomes an expected bright spot on the recipient's day and can make a huge difference in their lives. Please do not underestimate the value of these calls. What Grand County departments are needed. The following Grand County entities will be needed for a successful SAP to be formed. In order to compile and maintain a working call list, it is suggested to include input from Grand County Transportation, DSS Senior Center, Food Bank, as well as another department group organization dealing with the three identified recipient groups. To operate this SAP, coordination and cooperation between the sheriff's department, emergency services, including all rescue squads, and the dispatch office will not only be necessary but mandatory. Frequently asked questions. Ideally, in fact, I can skip this because we sort of fast forward hiring individuals. This part's where we've been taking care of. During financial times, how can this program be funded? Well, we've already found a fund, so again, I can skip over that. Now, enrollment in the SAP is free and is available to all that apply. Information needed will be minimal, including name, phone number, 911 address, family contact information, and possible neighbor contact information. It is the recipient's responsibility to notify the SAP of days or periods of time when they will not be available to receive calls. An answering machine will be hooked up to the SAP phone to retrieve such messages. In the event that caller receives no answer, SAP protocol will be followed, beginning with the neighbor or feeling in contact to have a deputy do a welfare check if needed. Summary. The Senior Insurance Program is not only a safety net for those in our county who need it most, it also needs to provide for better communication and application of services that they need on a regular basis. This program also allows these individuals that choose independent living to do so more safely and with their families' blessing. There are also callers who will be considered to that and provide part-time employment to individuals deserving of the need. Please consider implementing this program as quickly as possible for the benefit of the entire county, the seniors, handicapped, and disabled members of our county who serve them. Well, from your reporting this evening, that through a series of meetings, including the sheriff, Wanda Hill at the CBI Center, so J.B., director of DSS, Larry Emery with Emergency Services, and through several other contact points, I've received the much needed support in this program. Little did I know at the time, Sheriff Wilson at the SAP already had a sort of rough plan in the works operating through our jail facility. Well, through our communication this morning, and then he went to Captain Campbell later in the day and provided my paperwork, I think we can put together a very comprehensive type list that will be provided not only through jail in their calls, but through emergency services and the sheriff's department, so nobody falls through the cracks. This should cover pretty much everybody in the county. We're also going to work with the churches and several, Food Bank and several other entities just to make sure everybody's aware, and they'll also be writing an ad in the paper to make sure that word gets out. I don't expect an overwhelming list of names at first, but I truly believe once people see how well this program operates, that the list will continue to grow, and of course, none of us are getting any of them, so who knows who's going to be on one of these days. So, without taking up any more of your time this evening, I'd like Captain Campbell to step up just a minute and fill you in on what they've got going on with the jail concern in this program, and let you fill in some of the blanks. And of course, if you have any questions, in fact, I'll be happy to answer wherever I can.
First, sir.
Oh, I also have copies for each of you, should you want a copy of the episode.
Okay.
I did that prepared. Where would you want me to ask for?
Thank you.
I don't want to miss anymore. You won't have to just go there for the girls. Come on, I've talked about it. Just get my stuff out of the way here.
This also fell into place today. We'd already incorporated some call lists that the secretaries staff has filled on a regular basis, plus on the weekend, we've got a list now of about 80 to 20 seniors that we're already checking on on weekends. We got things from the mill from Wilster to where nobody, they get isolated on every day when they get to the mill, because on the weekends, there was nobody checking on us. So, we compiled a list from the people that are there down there, and I got the list from Warner, and for the last two weekends, we've been calling these folks on Saturday and Sunday. When he, I gave him a phone call the day that the sheriff tried his presentation by, and I said, "We already got the person down in place to do that." Being that said, with the two weeks of day shift, the people y'all appropriated for me on this commitments and on transport, you know, during their out of town, when they're not actually on that, or even if they are gone, and I still have to, both the people plus the salesmen on the tenant also, that's available Monday through Friday to take care of this, without any kind of funding, that's what, that's what costs us any extra. And with your permission, I'll top it up with the sheriff also, I'd like to go ahead and compile a database of all the 911 addresses to pick anybody that we can add to this list, and also compile a plan, if we don't get an answer when we do our call, implement a plan where we can call family members, neighbors, and also have key numbers available to be act, to put the plan into action immediately upon a known responsibility call. If we do, make contact over there, in the doctor's office, you know, in the hospital or everything may be, just to make sure that we follow up and, you know, make sure that we're not kicking people's doors down for no reason or sending a big alarm. If there is a need, which I have on several occasions, in my 25 years of service, where I've kicked doors down myself and I've been nobody there, or they've actually been somebody there that needed, that needed it, and, you know, I think we can implement a plan with no cost whatsoever, just a little bit of work on my part, which I'm willing to take over and coordinate the issue as far as the address goes and where we can send these people, and if, you know, if we do need to implement a response plan, if you can be on the way and go with from there. So, like I say, he brought that to me, and I read that all over today, and I already had that in my mind, you know, to start doing on the close of week. It doesn't matter if we've got 20 people or 120, you know, I've got personnel on time to do it. And like I say, it's still a cost, again, it costs money, no money whatsoever to do what we do, you know. Worst case scenario, we do whatever it does, that the debt is being on its way, and on the way, it gets turned around, and, you know, that only got us involved in the whole program, so, you know, that's pretty much about that.
The more you try to have a look at a program like that, how have you got the 911?
Right. Sheriff, when it first started here, maybe that I think, back in early 90s, but like I say, it's, you know, a lot of volume, you know, with the price of gas and everything back on volunteer basis, with us three right here, and, and laying it's been over the years, you know, that to me seemed like a little bit of that interest fell off on our community as well, just the fact that people pay for it. And, I mean, you know, if I had to do that, what I did 25 years ago, as far as, you know, keep in mind, try to, we asked somebody to check on things, so it happened, and it doesn't affect any, which is a problem usually, as you mentioned, but it would be better. I say, I have no, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and draw up a schedule and, you know, make it a complex program, and give y'all, you know, some rules and guidelines, and give it to y'all before the next meeting, and keep doing what we're doing, you know, what we still, you know, have some structure to it, and advertise it, and make it available to everybody, like I said, that's it, so it'll take a few hours of work, documentation, but if I can give something to them, it's all right with y'all.
Sounds good.
I should add, Friday, I'm spending this weekend, you know, I'm starting my first day, I should add the share of Friday, and I'll give it to Greg, email them, hopefully y'all can get it next week again.
Taylor, sir.
Can I readdress a couple things? Thank you. Two things I want to mention also, that I failed to do so previously. One, when I met there in the dispatch office, a very good point was made, and then I didn't even realize on that, that I'm a more sincere job, I realized this, and that is, not only could this become a welfare check daily for them, but in a possible case, maybe kind of severe weather coming into the county, it would become their responsibilities to ask the recipients, do they have the medications, do they have oxygen, do they have their food, do they have heat? Rather than in the middle of a blizzard or some other catastrophe, having to ground our resources out in the middle of the storm, this would totally prevent the lemonade, an awful lot of that, and of course, we all know seniors are forgetful, so it never hurts for a little urge or a reminder through these phone calls to make sure they do have what they need and are prepared.
I'm just saying, hold that for a while. That's a great idea.
Next, I'd also like to add that I contacted Greg Davis through Greg. He sort of ran me a long way around the tree and told me I had to go through Greg for the call in order to get this before them, but he said they had to come up to one of their committees. Well, he designated this to the Health and Science Committee, I believe it is, who Alicia, head of our health department, is the chairman of that committee. Little did Rick know, and two hours later, I was at Alicia's office meeting with her presenting this program. It's got 100% support by her, she's going to present it to the Greg board, and who knows, there could also be some outside funding for this through brands, which again, believe me, has been our tax dollars on this program. Not that we need more, but every little bit helps, and I just wanted you to be aware of that, that, and also, so that's also the answer. Any other questions? It's just scary when you say you're going to table things, so please, don't let this just slide through the cracks. I really am counting on you to move on rails and to support it all that you can through the different county departments that are going to be involved in this program. It is a very worthwhile and a win-win, not only for the county, but especially for our seniors and handicapped individuals in need of this program. Thank you for allowing us. Oh yeah, I believe he's enthusiastic enough at this point, where I don't think that's going to be a delay. You're going to have that on the spot, so thank you all. Yes, sir, next on this, we have the resolution to adopt the firm's scheduled regular meetings for Grand County Board of Commissioners, starting in April.
And I think I'm going to, yeah, I just think, you know, I'm going to. Due to everybody's schedules, I think we had first made the motion to have it on the second and fourth Tuesdays, but to everybody's schedules, that was not going to work out, so we have decided to do it on the first and third Tuesdays. So, we're going to make a motion to adopt the resolution to do it.
I have a motion, should I have a question, third Tuesday?
Tuesday.
First and third Tuesdays.
Tuesday, first and third Tuesdays.
I'm not waiting for that.
And that's at 5:30. Well, at the first meeting of the month, we'll just have no workshop, and it'll start at 5:30. And the second Tuesday will start at 5:00 with a workshop session, and then the regular start at 5:30. Yeah, the first and third Tuesday, yeah, which is the second meeting of the month, but it's the third one. The first and third Tuesday of each month. The first Tuesday of the month will be mainly at 5:30. The second and the third Tuesday of the month will be at 5:00 for workshop, regular meeting at 5:30. That's my motion. And this will begin in April.
Yes, sir, April 7th will be the first meeting of the schedule this, this semester. We will have our normal regular scheduled meeting next month now.
Yes, next month.
And then we'll be back on schedule in April for twice a month, regular scheduled meetings.
I'll let you sign two, two copies of these. A little bit of a quick wake up to do, because yes, on schedule, we'll start all over in April.
So, you said next Monday is your regular scheduled meeting for March?
Yes, this was a continued today, but we'll, we'll do our regular scheduled meeting next Monday. And then from then, starting April, we'll start our two meetings a month.
When will the financial reports be read?
The financials will be on this Monday first. The third Tuesday. What do we say? I'm going to be like 3:30. Yes. Did we say the first of March?
My understanding it was, it was the first meeting of the month, because it would be the most recent April, or at least Monday. What do you call him?
The third Tuesday.
She will let us know when we mess her.
I think she's had machines, and like, it's for everybody to know. I suggest you just look over, and we'll have a discussion on this at the next meeting, because there's a little, do you want to raise the deposit like, for too many people, over 100 people, you've got lots of things. Nonprofits still say to go charge, and are you going to allow dances on this floor, or are you going to, oh, yeah, I don't think you need to allow porn, we'll be going on for work.
We had one of those conspirators.
Well, we did this last year. The building was written 60 times, a little over 60 times last year. But I want you all to read, this is the rules, we're going to have a survey, let's camera put in, but we're not going to bring it out till it actually got put in, but just kind of look this up, make notations, please, if you want to add to it, take away from. This was just some old, old things that were put in there. If you see anything, help me out. Yes, maybe I'll buy Monday.
You know, if you find, too, that, you know, if the building is rented on a Friday, and someone has it rented on a Saturday, we've got to have staff come down there to make sure the building is, is okay, so that maybe a staff, it's an hour or so of extra time.
Is the thing enough to cover that type of potential?
It can be, and the restructuring that way is, is a positive, it's up to the board to discuss and think about, and say, you know, how do you need to?
The deposit fee may usually give us what, you would say, I think, they should play something to help me, help me do.
If someone has to come and check, about how many hours, it's like you shouldn't take that.
No more than an hour.
Okay, now, if they have to complain.
Uh, depends.
Yeah.
You did, you did an hour quickly.
You need to, you need to kind of, you need to have it wired, you need to have it over, you need to, there's some things I need you to jot down, help me, help us, structure this, I'm an agent, I know, I proceed. I think it's too nice to let it be, we don't need some structure here, we just need to know how to proceed. Yes. We've got to let you invest in it, so, I need ideas. Ceilings. Or ceilings, yeah. Or rail plant right there, might have a little bit, that's the first thing now.
It's just a little bit, too.
Yeah, yeah, ceilings, okay. We didn't need it about the, having somebody come down and walk through. Yeah, yeah, we got you, just wanted y'all to have. She's had a little more rain, so she waited up, just a little bit later for my last.
Yes, sir, last, last week, we discussed the seeking an RFP for firms to do demo on the other plant, sidecar, construction facility up there. They might follow up back to that, and ended in that, was something that we weren't aware about, that understepped off, there needed to be asbestos testing on the facility prior to an RFP being issued. And so, I asked Ed to seek out and see what asbestos test is going to be. He was able to locate two different firms that could do that. One firm said that it would be no more than $2,500. The other firm said that their inspection would be $1,885, they just gave the price, any samples or whatever, I guess they did. I'm sorry, what's that? I, I think that they just take a look at different areas of the facility as well, whether it be the floor, any of the, just inspectors, stairs, or anything back. Piping, you know, so that within the RFP, we know how to compare the companies in name, in fact, that it costs a bit, and it's part of permits to get more demo. Yes, they are certified, they're this sort of testing. When we get this done prior to an RFP being issued, this exceeds our offices, limits to be able to produce window training, or to get the sheriff's to say the most cost of effort. Matter of fact, we also reached out to some of the work for students, got license, but we haven't worked to, they haven't been involved in that. They say, like, show, 449, we've got license to do it, yeah. We have a motion to, to hold it in, or to hold it surprise.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay. I do have a couple items for, for mid-business here, that's okay, unless the last one's forgotten for me, y'all have some. The cemetery board met last Saturday, and cemetery board room, as a board, they've got some old, old equipment that they need to start plus, a couple of the items they can trade, is there going to be purchases of some new equipment that was requested by them last year? That, only two items they can actually trade in, the rest of it. only two items they can actually trade in, the rest of it, some others are junk.
You want me to take them out there?
Yes.
Just surplus the two?
Surplus the two, we're trading in. There's some other motors up there that perhaps the motors or some other parts aren't on, they still be good. Uh, but if you want to keep the motor and then surplus the junk on it to basically dispose of it, uh, we need to get approval from the board commissioners to, to do.
Is the facility in space work?
It's space work right now, um, other than the two needs to be traded in. So, but we need to get more permission.
And they were being given. So you want to surplus?
Yes, we have surplus those two and, uh, the other, it's just gonna hang on to. Yeah, I mean, he pulls parts off of them, I don't know if he wants to say.
He did need to get a, a trade in. But he said about the motors.
He said, he said the motors would potentially have some parts on them down there if it'd be usable. If he gets another mower of that style, some bodies and those kind of things are wore out. You know, if you pull the motor off of it, it may have a lot of, anything you gotta do to jump or scrap or do something with the body that ever happened. So, I don't know how he wants to say, uh, I don't have discretion for cemetery board to dispose of that motor.
What is surplus along, what do you want to do?
Surplus that non-useable equipment. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna keep whatever's good. You know, if you take it down, scrap it, haul it, count it, we haul off or trade it in, you know, we'll get whatever we can out of it. We have a motion to, for cemetery, cemetery supervisor to. Surplus. Surplus his old, running old equipment.
At his discretion. At his discretion. At his discretion.
Who were asked by the road by his own, take right to everything like that.
That, that has, has voted on by his board.
On the cemetery.
At their discretion. At their discretion.
We have a motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion. My accident.
Yeah.
Two, surplus five motors over there, uh, I understand, and then we trade in all, basically new equipment. And two, surplus the other, the three, at his discretion.
Lynn, have you got a question, or a question?
Well, in the end, this is a position where you should, I assume.
Would you like to have a talk with her? Good way to do it.
Okay, great.
Where are you?
I love you. Sorry, I'm like a little late to work later. What I'm here for is, uh, I mean, sort of wandering, wanting to, with the Affordable Care Act, and I'm on here. If I go over thirty hours, I've got to find a place. They can hear me. Cat, I'm just my. I'm a street. I always pour, for every better fifty-three, ten grand, I always get five full ton of robbers. And I cut that back when I get sort of retired, and some use of part-time to hold up in house and be able to perform many services for those clients. Especially with the road pets. I've got three that I'm gonna be messed with, they're gonna go over a few times. And when you look, you look back, I could give you a little travel, or I'll spend four hours back, I'm gonna spend four hours back, and I'm gonna be able to provide services. Uh, I've got three full ton of robbers, one fifty-three-teen, and two, uh, fifty-three-ten, it's a separate plan from the others. And I've got some of the robbers, some of the fifty-three-teen as well, for the part-time, I guess I have. But I don't, I can't just put them on without issuing a gas, and you can't kind of, uh, to be a portable care at the end of it.
What do you make it different, what do you make this one?
I made it for three of only insurance, and that's gonna be about eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, if you added another full time and another part-time to it, would that solve the problem?
It's, it's still, the cost of the hours of service in different places, you want in different directions. It's still not going to fix my problem. If I let somebody in an ashore, and they've got twenty hours already, can you figure nine hours for the day that everyone can come back? You never know. If the components are running out, they're gonna send them on the case in somewhere else, or the hours it's gonna require. You don't know whether the robbers can get sick, and can't, can't work the next day, and you gotta fill it in. And I try to, I just use the part-time, but I always get around the party, probably thirty-five or seven, or those three, I'm gonna try and watch it and verify of how many hours are here, and by what age to do it. I can't see how you can have the services there. I don't have to fix it. But I thought, if I put one of my full time and two of the thirty-one, and then you say thirty-five, I still would bypass the, uh, other benefits of, uh, holidays, sickly, annually, because of the minimum thirty-seven nine. I don't want to take what to do right now, that's the reason I'm asking you, but I know. I'm really good with it, I haven't even tried to see that yet, but it was like a budget. I'm really good right now, I'm percentage of my employees. But a lot of times, I don't know if it'd be that way at the end of the year. And I learned that two months, which is hard, but it's process and handle months, and I'm gonna make this a bigger term next year. I don't know where I live, I don't know what to do.
Is there an opportunity to hire any initial part-time staff that way, if you have some of your part-timers now who are
If you're red-tainted.
About to go over the mark, we can.
I just did that, that in five, trying to offset this problem and pulling more part-timers. I've already asked a couple of those, they find, uh, other jobs and they usually move on. And even though they should put the position of part-time, and even though it's safer when you're putting on, we want you to be on standby, we need you, we can't, we want you to come in. It's difficult for somebody to be on standby all the time, maybe they've got something else to do that day, or the next day that you're leaving. It's a little bit difficult, everybody wants full time.
Could you try it for a month?
I've been trying for a month.
Well, I know about a lot of people unemployed still in the county, and I think there's several in my community that I live, I trust, I'm closest with.
Well, there's certain restrictions and requirements, and you tell me that I've gone. It's not like, uh, you hired me to do that, you know, it's, uh, in there, the training's in there, the moment of orientation, I was two people before I got hired. We said, that's the way of the orientation, because most people are the same. You get that land, this seven eagles, weight set, I read, crosswalk, those are something set, I read, and you just drive around, run along. Then I really realized what the job entails. And when you put into orientation, and they understood the required training, what goes on, and most of the part of them is to drive, the staff meetings and all the things that are required, they brought out, the lifts, uh, the compliance with that, the free trips, the post-trips, they brought out of that. It, uh, I don't know if it's, and I'm also by bus, it's nineteen ninety-nine bus, that was long before everyone to transit. That bus can be replaced when we get one hundred and forty-five thousand miles, when I went to transit, that twenty-two thousand miles I, back in two thousand and three. It now has one hundred and twenty-nine thousand miles on it, and my ability to stretch it so good, that that bus on the road, if the time's up, I can give surplus, I'll, 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 one, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I can surplus a person and replace them, give me another. That's, uh, so hard to do, you get five miles a gallon of that. See, that's, I don't ride that bus much, because I'm forty minutes. But I'm gonna be running that bus, I'm gonna be running that bus, I'm gonna be working. I've got to try and get required securities, I have to run that bus, I have to, I have to.
Yes, it's there.
It'll be, it'll be soon, yeah. And that's what we're doing right now, is to get that bus on the road.
Yeah.
To get those miles.
Why do you want to do with what they want?
To keep from your control, and the wisdom that she played, we still, we could, we still are going insurance. When we do that, we're back, we're back, we're kind of in front of her. That's what I'm questioning. And that's what she can do forever. She put in the budget, and she didn't take it back out baby day, the four miles for the insurance, she jacked it out. And we lived it that way, and I mean, I think I was at, uh, forty-one percent or fifty-one percent, it should have been sixty percent, and I was good in my budget right now. But I don't wanna mislead you, that, that's a thing I said, I, yeah, start going to the roof again, the main services. I don't wanna mislead you. How long could you get low with Ted? And, and the one with fifty-three-ten, that, that, two years, that, uh, the Affordable Care Act, discount dollars, discount dollars.
And everybody's retiring.
Well, what you have is people seeking their insurance, because when they pay it off, it's what's happening, and they're afraid, and, and they need jobs. But if insurance is, you know, somewhere else, with the money, the time.
That's, that's the extent of it, it's just having insurance.
And the people that have already been filing their taxes, or starting to file their taxes, or everyone hasn't paid. And they're really afraid, and, because of insurance. And that's the truth.
That's true. This is not the chance to go down to the jail employees, the sheriff's department employees, and the emergency workers, they work all the time. If you've got twenty-three hours, you bet all the house here, you don't know how many hours.
You don't know that, that's what you're trying to, that's what you gotta know.
And I thought, I doubt if there anybody here, and after the stop, they're walking at ten o'clock in the morning, and they go over.
Especially when it's at ten, too, I mean, they'll send them on where the services are, and then they.
Have you got three, three, any employees to do it with?
Every employee I've got, I've seen.
Well, I mean, you know.
I do, I do. The buses especially, there's one I'm gonna put on, keep that bus on the road with the seat wheels, That I want to finish that watching out, he's going to retire me and sign, sign, just turn that bus and um... Got to get that bus on the road and stay there. It's going to stay on the road five days, maybe those miles in the short term.
Why am I going to know the amount?
Two.
All right.
You tell me, do you have two?
I need thirty people, this would be.
I need three, I don't have no two, let me see what I can do. Because.
So come back to us if that don't work out.
I know, but I hired one, one, three hundred and this was the same, amazing. And then I had to call them like that. But two years later, they're back there.
Well, I thought you've been doing two and you need thirty.
I have, no, I don't, I've got two on the insurance. I've got ten riders, I've got ten riders right now, first ten riders that ride by. Two's on the insurance in the six oh three now, there's one fifty-three ten. The F seven did not have insurance, they don't have any. Any benefits.
They're talking to people with the hand gun, no?
It sure is.
And then, and then they're on part time and they're requesting to pay me.
There is, and two of my first ones that I thought are bad sign language. They've got around the insurance, they've got John Sullivan's, they don't change, I think they're bad sign language that they don't want. So I'm looking close to them, I'm looking close to them all the time. But I'm still getting all the basic services, I got what I need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they have to sign waivers, but I haven't had that in mind.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, last meeting, we also talked about uh... Board of Wonderman Academy, some more information about uh costs of RFPs or needs assessment for jail justice. Um, and then delivery, those kind of things. Uh, I have, you know, whatever, well, thanks to the, to the newspaper, whenever they came out on paper, it's another shortage of our, their, our, probably office. Quite a few who've reached out and offered to help. What none of them have been able to offer is just give me a general idea of what the delivery times are for needs assessment, what a cost is, it will be. Uh, because really, truly, it just depends on the scope of what you're looking at. Probably the best idea of what I've, that I've gotten is one of the firms that I spoke with said basically, look. The best way to validate is to do an RFP, which is a request for qualifications. And then you pick the most qualified firm and then you negotiate that your fee is beyond that. It's something that you decide that you want to go forward with. Um, as we discussed, you know, if we're talking about jail or we're talking about court facilities, you know, I mean, doing a whole analysis of what we want to do, and I've got some pretty good uh examples from across the country, all the way to Texas. You know, whether the counties that have done different types of assessments. To, to really kind of look at.
Speaking of county.
Well, I don't know how similar they are to Grand County, looking at the organizational structure, I think they're a lot larger than what Grand County is, but you know, just the model of what we're, we're looking at. Um, and, and trying to proceed, I mean, at this point, I still don't have a straight answer as to what a needs assessment is and the cost of Grand County. I think that it's, it's going to be more sitting down, get the qualifications, you know, send out the qualifications of firms that would be interested in providing the service. And then let's, let's sit down and go through this list of these firms, uh, score them, uh, pick a firm, you know, we're not obligated at that point with anything to the firms that we would like to be.
We're getting ahead, so now they know what we are talking about, what we can do in your area.
And, and that's it, I mean, once, once the qualification firm lesson in, they can help us formulate what it is that we want to go after with the RFP, with the proposals and uh, and the mission to be. So I wanted to get the worst thought on that because no one's going to give a price, because it's really a tremendous.
Yeah, but the price.
They don't want a price. Uh, delivery, I don't think it's going to be a big issue, I think most of those folks are going to look at your, your demographic, at your population, your historical trends of jail populations. If you start moving in the direction of court systems, uh, integrating social services in that facility, I mean, that, those are all the specials that we would want to have with a firm that be completely vetted and qualified. And we're not there, so I think that just like interviewing an employee, we would be better off to get a, at least qualified firms and be able to approve those applications and select the ones that we would uh, like to interview and move forward there, and I want to hear your thoughts on that.
Who's government in counties that are around us?
Transpenny County. This is Transpenny County, I've got like six or eight years.
They want to be here?
Yeah, they're, they're, it's hard to get them, it's, it's.
But we can, we can certainly get some information to be.
One firm I've contacted, they just recently did uh, some work on Paul County, which is incredibly, is really good.
No one will tell us.
Oh, sure.
Take my side.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there would be, it's on you, circumstances. Um, it's uh, you know, and I think it's going to be tighter fit, you know, with whatever individual needs you want to be.
Did Clay County put one in this in the later?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure if there was, is there was in the jail and?
Yeah, I don't know, I think, and then they said, there's a jail, there's a law enforcement, so.
It's one of their, I'm sure. Their county administration is still down there, that's what they're managing to do. But now they have other aspects of county government that's in this large facility.
I thought uh, they just moved on to the first one, same number?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I spoke to Paul, believe the county manager, he indicated he was still down there. But now a large portion of the county government operations did move into this new facility.
Most of them, the other, the Jackson County, we came down there, Jackson County.
Well, I mean, I talked to somebody today and they said, Jackson County, I grew up in the jail, I spent the day, the day I lived. Yeah, so maybe, there, there is a lot.
But they do have office space, I think, besides the jail.
That's right. Now, I wanted to get your thoughts on, you want to proceed with that as, as, you know, just more like an interview. And then find a qualified firm that can help us develop that idea and look at the needs and do that analysis and proceed in that way?
I don't know, it's excellent, I think we will have second, I think of what we're asking for, before we talk to Key.
Yep, I can ask you what were you looking for, we, we.
You may know it.
Oh, well, I mean, I, I, I mean, I want to hear from, from you.
Why did we throw this out there, or we threw it out, we made it, we made it to jail for.
We do.
Long time. But we also thought through about very likely this, uh, judge, we must say our corporate, we must. About it, like a justice. So we've thrown this in the air, we've got to make that work.
Yes, sir.
And we stopped talking to somebody, I don't know if we had a talk, uh, we wasted their time and hours.
I wasted my time.
And I've heard that.
They'll, they'll run right on.
And I mean, quite honestly, I mean, you know, I, I would rather have one loan as three or four, you know, so if we can look at, you know, ways to... And I'm just saying, you can always combine every facility in a county with one group, I mean, and make it work, but you know, if we can, you know, launch some of these projects together, it certainly, long term, is beneficial and you don't have everything scattered out all over this.
Well, it seemed to me in one of our meetings that it was a priority that we talk about DSS building first in one place because there is money available to, to pay a large portion of that now and those funds may, may not be made.
And then they're supposed to go down contact, they need to be all that. And it'd be, it was originally, yeah, they said they'd tell you about, they should, they should, they, 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 they. No, they, 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 they.
So right now, it's just one, until they get in touch.
Yeah, uh, the former director, she related with the board and, and president, that was, she was in there and contacted.
And then again, if a portion of that, if it had to be financed by the taxpayers of this county, we would have that in place too. But we're talking to someone about a jail and the other facilities that we've got.
Sure. Let, let, that firm, Tandy was talking, Ted, that is a turnkey, I mean, it's wrapped down to financing. For, you know, the building, the moving. They just, they are, this is any services that you want to make.
Do you think we need to talk with some of these public people before we know when the bill is going to be possibly sent out on a social services facility? Or go in? I don't believe.
Uh... Would, would, like, maybe, maybe they need to build it, but I'm not sure, they, 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 they managed to back up those. Nine or eleven, maybe, and someone might be interested in that, uh, one of the more commissioning, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, I mean, we won't say.
Okay.
I know it was a long, long, now, she should, so, one eight, they, I think we got her by name, the assessment.
Jack was on.
Yeah, they do. So they'll look, probably. Well, who did we say when, but they're going to pull all that up, it's probably happening, but get everything going down there.
And then just, I'll do this after.
That not used to go, go, uh, direction, relax, relax, or just say, or, or.
And we don't want to miss the money that's available to deal with while it is available.
Oh, absolutely.
Really want to get out of that.
And I was going to question that, it's coming from the state that those fifty, seventy-one ones are in jeopardy.
No, but we do.
Of course, you never know. As a different, else out there, you never.
No, we forget, please.
That's right.
Could you reach out to the county manager, I think we're trying to do right, but I don't know that. Or did Swine County come up with their own, their new jail, Clay County, do you know?
I know that uh, Swine County actually funded their jail through USDA. Uh, completely financed their jail there with USDA law. Uh, because I spoke with the manager, he had to be about that. So I'm not sure about Clay County, I have not spoken to Paul about it. I don't know that there was any grants or something at all.
I don't believe.
In that, I haven't heard anything.
I'm sure PK.
Oh, sure, yeah, they're, they're, votes are always more shared, I haven't heard.
Is this something about the interest of the, like, half of them, I've never found one, or, or. Regular tax underwriters. Uh, bond referee, not, they would talk about. And you know, the, the, the.
Yes, sir, well, I mean, either, either way, I mean, there's, there's potential with bond referee, that's just goes to a lot of taxpayers, they're looking to, you know, medicate a tax increase through to cover that, that bond failure.
I do know that a lot of citizens is against, you know, like your four houses, but they don't want that problem.
I understand, you know, that one may all.
Yeah, but I think you should, we are experiencing, yeah, we know we've got this, but we know there's money available to do the most, cover the most of that cost now. So I'm, I guess that's.
I just, the biggest thing, you don't want to build a facility and then five, seven, ten years down the road, you know, start a square, you know, a judge, you know, you have two major courses, you've got to do this. You've got to pay.
I am never, and I'm certainly aware, and I know very little about judges, thank God, and their orders. But I am not aware of judge forcing a county with a twenty-five percent taxpayer building your four houses. I'm not aware of that.
Does Sam say, you said you closed that four house down, about the.
He said he could, that return the hell.
Just, yeah. Just now was there? He, that was, we were living in a new pharmacy. It's already, it's, turned out, I didn't, in a new pharmacy, and, and it's, you mean, you said, I said you want, for the taxpayers. He said if I need to do, what was it saying?
He could.
That's right.
But I'd like to say, I'm, I'm about to ask, and I have my, my.
I know, I know, I heard that, that one changed it too, apparently one of them changed it.
You don't need to.
Right. If I were to break it, back in the sixties, he didn't do any, uh, I said, I didn't do it. You know, back in seventy, I said, I didn't do it. Seventy, I was just trying to transition, I mean, I believe what's being said, and said, no. But that's something about that law, that was something, that was, this is the second.
Exactly.
I don't like that. But I have, since the, I can, I can very sore, obviously, there's no way you're going to keep, put them in, 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 in any way. And so, you know, best, 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 whatever it is. So probably, what's the actual way to, uh, sound, what they're, they're, they're for this?
As, uh, you have that.
Oh, that's, I, you know, um, it's a conversation, how do you like it?
See, we, we, we.
Here we are, we're not, we're not.
I know we've been talking about doing this and doing that since the seventies, we've done that. I mean, we keep talking about it, but we've done that.
You want ready to go ahead and reach out to, someone to see?
Well, we're going to do something, I mean, we, we can put it off till the next meeting, and then put it off till the next, and we can talk about two more things than this year's young. We're going to do something, I think they started it now.
Well, we got this, uh, this, so that they can keep in one of their, Tan Jacob Brown, that, but they had the, his court around and had it been forward with that. But I believe what Keith was saying, that they're going to re-look, and possibly be able to bring that to us, they, they keep.
Uh, uh, sure.
By, uh, uh.
Put it out, put it out, you know, when, when.
They don't have a schedule, they, for.
For making.
For how many, uh, does it get all, it's like, it's like, you know, and, and, say, because, uh, county, it's a, a.
Maybe they could, like, you know, if they were fully together, if I could talk to them and find out when they could make, uh, our meeting on Monday, we'll go to them.
You know, I mean, if, if nothing else, I mean, you know, qualifications are going to be in place forever, I mean, if, if it helps a board, if it takes a while to plan that and make sure to get these things in, you wouldn't have to, like, probably the second meeting, I mean, if you want to get qualifications, I can request that.
Will you, will you get some qualifications to play, yes, you say you can allocate hundreds of years, who they not to do this type of work, you know?
Yes, that's, I'm, I can, I can, I mean, yeah, it's what takes time.
I'm willing to, yeah, I'm sure.
So, we, uh, we're, uh, hopefully, uh, we're, uh, uh, I, 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 I'll, we'll be ready to, 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 to.
I've got one little thing I'd like to throw out, and just see what you think, uh, school's going to be out before long, and, uh, I'd like to see, uh, check into it, see if we could, uh, create some jobs for, uh, I don't want to say low income families, you know, I don't, if you had any kids that, uh, was arrested in a job, you know, I think low income families, you know, now that on, you know, some kind of student ladder to start with, but, uh, I've got a thing here, is, uh, a J, J C, B C, uh, you can look direct for grants for these jobs, but, uh, I'd like to, you know, make five boys and five girls, try to, you know, it's just, uh, something, where they father school the club, you know, I mean, they can make fifteen thousand dollars, you know, in some time, but, you know, yeah, so, little money in the pocket, that's, yeah.
Maybe, maybe some of the firm, we've got some, yeah, for Jackson, or, something like that.
Yeah, we used to, through the, uh, job link, you know, and they still do that, we'll place those kids, but then we did hire our hook kids, and all of a sudden Robert had it, and, close to that.
Well, but it, it, this seems like, you know, that, kids, what I know, all, all those kids made a good work, but it, this seems like, I mean, most kids wind up in most of these jobs, they're really, like, they don't pay a lot of pounds, and, well, it's, it, not me.
Right.
I mean, I know, you, discriminate, I don't, yes, but, uh, uh, maybe some of these kids, you can, they play together.
I know, I know, usually, most of the firm, uh, for, more, uh, two, uh, four shows.
Well, now, of course, there was, they do, about two, two jobs down there, but if you look back and see if you've been working on jobs, it's paper, but, I mean, I'm glad they got it, I'm glad, I'm glad they offered it, it's kids, and I'm, I ain't talking about, I ain't talking about technical, I mean, uh, I'm talking about kids, like, this, yeah, really, man.
What do you refer to, that, that, work, lots of change, that they, I would say, in your firm, to, 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 to.
And that comes with a future, perhaps, that, that, the, the job link, uh, you chose, they did, J C, B C, and, and jobs, and, 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 and...
It's J C, B C, it's, it's, I'll explode, I don't know.
They're, they're, basically, yeah.
It's, 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 it's J C, B C, it's for headwinds, uh, kids in the school system, you know, and, um, um, I'll, I'll come back through. Those ones that were coming out through the region, they were passed through for those funds, they are, uh, through, were passed through, we actually make, uh, max those funds in the year, but, uh, and, uh, those programs are eventually, you know, it's, the school system, can't...
I know, the school works, definitely, or, with our service works, yeah, but, once I know it's going to work, and it's really...
I agree with you, I've seen that, too.
It's really not, it's maybe not. Yeah, I took it, I don't know what's really...
And there's not, which I like to do, but...
I, I don't know, we need grants, I saw, they, uh, you know, local grant, they do for me. Uh, it's sort of like, I don't understand, but, you know, we, we see these funds are there to, these things are, are already in the system, and they're going to, 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 to,